Okay, good evening and welcome. So this is tonight's meeting of the Town Promotion Committee. Welcome to everyone present and those watching online. I'm going to start with apologies. I have apologies from councillors Nixie and Albon. Do I have any other apologies? Okay, we do have three councillors who are members of this committee present, so we are hoaret. Do I have any declarations of interest from any of those three? Okay, no, thank you. So can we approve the minutes of the ordinary meeting of the Town Promotion Committee held on the 11th of June as a true record? I need a proposer and a seconder please. So councillor Huxley and councillor Albon, thank you very much for all in favour. The same three. Okay, so very quickly that leads us straight into the town promotion update, which is, I'm going to hand over to Rebecca. We have her report sent out in advance, so I don't know if there's anything you want to add to that.
Just to thank Susie for all her hard work with Ramsgate Day. It was a really successful event, had good weather, the teenager market were excellent. So also thanks to the district council, Natalie Glover and Sharon Davis in particular, and the technicians for the work they did. And also just to update the second item I've got on there about VJ Day. It's on the 15th of August. The tunnels are putting on an event, I think it's, excuse me, a ticketed event, but we will be raising a flag at 900 hours, oh 900 hours, at the...
Bandstand.
At the, well, yeah, at Wellington Crescent. So that's at nine o'clock on the 15th of August.
What day of the week is that?
That's a very good question. Thank you. The only other thing to say, we've got, we've had six more of these cake planters, so you'll see a few more of them, including, I've spoken to Jeremy Godden about the planters that opposite the amusements that are falling apart. And we're going to swap him to ours and get rid of those, which will improve that section of Harbour Parade. And the work on the mini library in Charlotte Court is now underway. Dom Matthews, one of our technicians, is making that and an artist is going to decorate it and put the first lot of books in there. So we'll keep that stocked and see how that goes. We've found a suitable location to install it.
How big, how big is it? Is it of a very similar size to the other ones that are around about, which is quite...
It may have three shelves, so slightly, slightly up. And it would go, if you know Charlotte Court and the Paton area has got beds around it and they're on, it's like wooden planks, it will be affixed to those wooden planks. That's, that's the plan there. Anything else on there? Oh, there's also, we've, we've painted, well, you know, these cigarette, they had the yes and no ones, you can put your cigarette butt in. So I encourage smokers to actually get rid of their cigarette butts in the appropriate fashion and not create more litter. And that's been sent off to the same person that sandblasted that bench end, and they've blasted that and powder coated it in the orange, so that would be going into the town centre as well. Hopefully it will stand out more. And the only other thing I wanted to mention is to say thank you to Simon for the last two years. We're very sad for, for everybody. We're so sad that you're going, but also happy for you, you've got a role that you can, you know, get your teeth into and hopefully you'll be very successful.
It sounds, it sounds like he used us nicely for the last couple of years to keep things turning and has now moved on to pastures, whatever.
I think we should min it that.
It is actually.
But yes, thanks to that Simon, it's wonderful working with you.
Congratulations and yeah, best of the future. You know, I know life changes and, you know, things do not, so.
Hope you will send us a Christmas card or something so often from wherever you are.
Probably wanting to on the train.
And can we, can we draw attention to your star status?
I know. Well, I was going to mention it, but I have gifted Jonathan, the auntie of the, the lavanetis.
This is Simon's desk decorations that he's leaving.
As, as provided by Dean. Not actually hand etched.
Fair enough, but no. It is, it's lovely. I think, you know, it's one of those things that...
I'm going to straighten my, my shelf of awards, of which that will be the only one.
For 30 or 40 years, I wonder where it'd be. No, it is, it is lovely.
Happy memories.
Dean?
Are you moving on?
Yeah, I've got a job at a place called Frameworks UK. It's kind of more into the world I came from, communications for challenges and social justice issues.
The story behind my, my little joke about using us for the last two years is actually that he is going back into his previous style of work and is going to have the opportunity to use the skills that he left behind. So I think it's, you know, it is actually a very positive thing for him. So, you know, it's like, those are skills that we haven't utilised here because that hasn't fitted the job and...
He's gained other skills, working.
Absolutely, of course he has.
I just read his 17 page up for this tomorrow.
Yes, and how to cut down from four pages to one. Yes, absolutely. But no, so, so I think, you know, it is a positive move. We're sad to see him go, but for him it's a positive move, one that needed to happen at some point. So anyway, and we won't have any more wonderful photos of your little girl playing on the beach.
She'll still be around.
Yes, but, but...
See her live.
Trevor mate, Trevor probably doesn't know, but when he did the mock-up of some of the active Ramsgate leaflets, he used photographs of his daughter for the family ones, an absolutely stunning photograph of this little girl on the beach that, you know, it was an artistic, it was perfectly artistic and we could not persuade him to actually use it. But it was, it was wonderful. So that's the other part.
You've done little girls your 30s.
She's still quite little.
Yeah, not as little as she was, day by day, not as little as she was, so.
Can you talk about Ramsgate every time you meet anybody up in London?
Of course. Yeah, yeah, well, one of my colleagues who I'll be working with is based in Broadstone.
Oh, really?
That's the whole world, really, it's the whole world.
So is there anything else, have you finished your bit?
Yes, I don't think there's anything, obviously there's, it's all in front of you. The save the dates for next year, Operation Diamond is obviously subject to funding, which, you know, will happen when we have our budget meetings.
What we will be doing when we have our budget meetings, we need to rearrange that fast.
And also, I'm sure you're going to mention the half programme that starts next week, which is another legacy that Simon has created for us, that we hope that relationship with Ramsgate Football Club will continue and flourish. But that's pretty much it for me.
So yeah, I mean, thank you for the report. I think it's, you know, I think everything's quite clear, nice bullet points. Very much appreciate the calendar events nicely clear there. I see we have got, is that a permanent new name for the Lumiere?
It's still to be confirmed.
Right, okay, because I know that we, it was the Lumiere last year and I know that we had to rename it, but I'll just check if that was the, the name. I don't have any more questions on this unless anyone else asks. Okay, so I think we just note the report, we just note the information there. Which takes us to Simon.
Thank you, yes. Well, before I get to the listed items, yeah, I do want to say thank you. I am really sad to be leaving the role, but yeah, the right opportunity's come along at the, at the right time. But it's been an absolute, it's been an absolute pleasure working here. I'm a town councillor, I always say, which is well above its weight. It's incredible what it achieves. And I've been really privileged to work with Rebecca, and Dean, of course councillor Quinton and Huxley very closely, and they've really sort of helped me along the way, you know, coming into this totally unawares and what went on in the past. So I really appreciate all the support in getting me going and then also supporting some of the things we've done over the last...
I think I'd just add at that point is that you came in at a time and so we, before you, we'd had external contractors had been managing active Ramsgate and we needed someone that could take what was there before, that, you know, we'd not had anyone doing it for six months or whatever. And so the skills you brought to that role were exactly what was needed at that time in order to make that transition from external contractors to internal management. So that was very much a key part of what we wanted from you, which is a key part of what you gave us, so thank you.
Well, yeah, and really hopefully if nothing else as I step away, there's a good solid foundation there that it is running internally, with Gass actually in place. It really does feel like it's rolling in the right direction from my perspective, maybe people think differently. But yeah, hopefully it's a good, it's a very good foundation to only grow from here, I'm sure it will. And to that point as well, rest assured to the other councillors around the room, we talked with Dean and Rebecca just today actually about handing over, tying up everything neatly before I go, but also I know there'll be a bit of a gap between my department and someone else coming in and I would be more than happy to come back and lie with that person for a couple of days, one to one, to give them the best start they can, because I really want to see it continuing and doing well.
I'm conscious that the planning for Active Ramsgate Week next year needs to begin relatively soon and...
Yeah, yeah.
I have, have had conversations with Laura and, you know, we, I'm hoping that it's not going to be too long before we're able to get someone else in. I know these things do take time, but yeah.
Yeah, but the good news is, I mean, with things like that, there's a model there for them to run with. Supplies are lined up, if anything, you could probably shrink it down a bit in the next year, so it's just them taking it on for the first time, but you know, we've got a good...
That's what we did when we, when we stopped using external contractors, we went as to Rebecca's favourite word, vanilla. I haven't heard her use it for a long time, but everything was vanilla at the time.
It was just that, really.
It was, it was, it was the in-word, I think, at the time, but everything, so, but yes, I mean, that, that's the point, is that, you know, it's, there's...
There's a model there, there's a format there and the supplies there, you know, we've got a good...
I'm sure whoever takes it on will bring their own personality to it and, you know, it will change a little bit again, so, you know, that's just, that's the way it goes.
I'll be happily looking forward to see how they do that.
So will I.
I'll be spoiling, Rebecca already on the first day that I said I was stepping down, was already calling me to volunteer for the things, so I'm no doubt to be involved still ahead.
Would you like to be a steward?
Yeah, yeah, I'm sure.
Free, volunteer.
Happy to support where I can from the other side. But on that, just before we get to the others, yeah, the sort of last hurrah, I finished the end of next week, but the end of next week is the half week, which is the partnership with Ramsgate Football Club to reach kids on their summer camp programme, some of the more least advantaged families, was, was one of the things we set out to do this year and build partnerships with local community organisations. So that's, that's looking, that's looking good and we'll be getting some photos of that, so at the next TDC, you'll be able to see how that went and how it translated. And it's, and I think it's a nice example of how the active Ramsgate portfolio is growing in that respect. I mean, this year we've had a bigger Active Ramsgate Week, but we've got this thing with RFC next week. We've also had the collaboration with, you can see on the bike revival, which is now wrapped up as well. And I'm, I'm again, going to be tying, sorry, looping in Rebecca and Dean with, with the people at TDC to make sure that rolls next year as well and again, handing that over to the next person. That's a kind of for intro, just on the two items, so moving on to five I and the licences. I won't go into detail here, the report is there, other than to say that if there's anything else, I leave as a legacy of Active Ramsgate, I really do feel this is quite critical to the healthiness and the survival of Active Ramsgate. And it is something that we need to address at TDC. And councillor Ormond and councillor Quinton did hear from suppliers directly in this room, we've just finished transcribing that, so as tomorrow you can read that at length, but it only confirms everything that is in here.
Can I, can I just check, has everyone read the report that Simon's provided regarding the TDC licences? So, and I appreciate councillor Shonk, you're not actually a voting member of the committee, but have you read it as well?
I can, because it was always a problem about this licence.
Right, because it's just this, just this two page, which, you've managed to get on to two pages. Are there any questions about what Simon has written on this report? Just this one, this is one, item five one there, are there any questions? So the only thing I would like to say is I'd like a little bit of rewording on the first page. Where it says, I think it just needs clarifying, because it says it's 700 plus 380, my brain goes 1080, and then this raises a total of 1580, and I think it's a typing error, and I know it's not, but it needs, it just needs tweaky bits around there. Just to clarify that the 1080 is for fitness, leisure and arts crafts, and the total for 1580. Don't worry, we can do, Dean can do that.
Yeah, it's the difference between the minimum you might pay as a seasonal operator and the maximum you might pay as a...
It just needs to be, it just needs to be clarified. Dean and I can sort that out, as if Dean can do it, but you know, if you, if you have a little tweak on it, then send it to me and, or whatever. So the question really is, at the end, is the recommendations that, to raise the issue at TDC cabinet level, to reconsider the current blanket fee structure. Now, I know, we already know that this will be coming up at cabinet, because obviously Steve has been here and councillor Ormond's been here and he's aware of it and councillor Everett's aware of it and so are the rest of cabinet. So we know that it will be coming up at cabinet and it will be coming up through the TDC Star Chamber negotiations for the budget for TDC for the next financial year, which will be starting, I think later this month, this roundabout now. So that will, that will be a part of it. So that's fair enough. We know that's already in hand, but it doesn't hurt making, saying it again. Propose a motion at Ramsgate Town Council's Town Promotion Committee to support TDC's reconsideration to find a better alternative. Anything we do at TP needs to be ratified by full council, so from this it becomes our RTC's full council on the wording, which is, if we agree this, that's the wording that will need to be redone. I'm going to ask TDC to commission further research into how other councils licence small scale activity providers to inform best practices. I see no reason not to, for, not for this, this committee to not pass that motion from Town Promotion to go to full council. I mean, the three of us here will not be the final deciding group on that and it will have to go to full council, but I see no reason not to actually put that to full council from this committee. I'm getting nods, yes, councillor Huxley.
How do you define a better alternative, quotes on quotes?
Which is that?
Recommendations. Propose a motion for RTC's, TDC to support TDC's reconsideration to find a better alternative.
I don't...
I mean, it doesn't matter.
I'm inclined to say let TDC worry what a better alternative is, because they're going to need, you know, the relevant people at TDC are going to need to look at what the alternatives are.
I would say that was a link to the third point, that it's down to them to do the research, to do more research.
And find out what other places to do, etc.
But we do provide a list of alternatives.
Absolutely. Yeah, and, and there may be, there may be yet another option that they come up with after talking to other, other local authorities. So any other comments, councillor Shonk?
I don't know, I think that if Simon's staying on, he's using his eyes to see whether he could have updated, because I think some of these costs prevent, but you're, you're TDC, so I'm sure he's going to go to full council.
Yeah, I mean, I appreciate, yes, I mean, all three of us here are also TDC, but I don't know about the other two, but I'm quite adept at taking hats off, so I'm focusing, I'm thinking RTC at the moment. So yeah, the only thing I just want is, so this report, I think, can go more or less as it is, subject to the town park's ratification. We will, before it goes, we will just on the first page under issue, just clarify that the 1080 is for fitness, leisure and arts crafts, rising to 1580 for water sports activities, I think will be, will be the wording there. And on the back, propose a motion at RTC's full council rather than TPC.
Yep.
So with those two changes of wording, I will propose that we accept this as a, and we'll just leave this as a motion, seconded by councillor Huxley, councillor Albon, and as the other...
I would agree.
We agree. Yeah, so it will go forward, but it will be with those two minor amendments. Thank you. I'll be, I've scribbled, I don't need that copy. Okay, back to you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item five two, I did a report on AR Week, the last TDC, it was quite quick after the week itself, so I won't go through it all again, but just to show you some of the activities as they actually took place, because I'm a big believer in showing. If you just skip down, yeah. So, just some images of the different things. Obviously this year, we had an even bigger number of activities, we had 20 during the week, we were averaging about three activities a day. We repeated many from last year, but we also brought some new ones in, I'll come on to those. But under our walking strand, we've got our Nordic walkers there, which is a growing business and doing well. Our nature walks with Keith Ross in the middle. And one of our walking tours, we happened to have worked with Adam Wright, who's doing some summer ones. But there are many walking tours now across Ramsgate, which do well in and of themselves. You know, maybe we need to evolve them in Active Ramsgate Week. But that's our walking strand. Just moving on to the next one, under our cycling strand, we had another of our bike tours, which goes from Ramsgate through to Marge and back through St Peters, and that's working with Colours Tent Bike Tours. We worked with Toby Dow at Harbour Bikes, using Bike Hire, for people to take on the peer-to-peer Ramsgate to Deal Ride, that's the family in the middle. And we also had some rickshaw rides again around the harbour, which seem to be growing in popularity each year we do it. Yeah, we're particularly well taken up this year, and I think could be something we expand on in the future, something that was a more regular event. Under our exploring theme, we had our seashore safaris and beach hunts with Thana Coast Project. I'm really pleased that this is partnership with Thana Coast Projects that is growing and growing. And just as I'd started, really, Thana Coast Project wasn't really doing much in Ramsgate anymore, because they said they weren't getting the numbers and sometimes, depending on what they're doing, our beaches aren't the most ideal. But in working with them and bringing more people to them, they are now regular fixtures again on their, their own calendar, but also doing to in Active Ramsgate Week. And our promotion is working, because they have like a calendar of about 20 events throughout Thana every year. And the active Ramsgate ones were filled up within days and the other ones, they took quite some time to fill, even up to the, up to the, up to the days. We also had our boat trip again, boat trips are very, very popular, probably the most popular activity we run in terms of the number of people applying to do it. That's exploring. Under water sports, we ran our kite tastings again on the main sands. It's, you know, it's just a chance for you to have a go with the Piah kites, both adults and children, and children really, you know, children can do it as young as like five, six, and they, and they really enjoy it. And one we introduced this year as well was a session with Hayward Sports to do some stand-up paddle boarding skill sessions off Western Undercliffe, for those who already do paddle boarding, but to, to, to upskill them with a, with a bit of a session. And we also did sea hiking, sea hiking event with Canoe Wild again, which is the sea safari, sorry, sea safari that goes out to the, to the seals and around Egwell Bay. We actually had to rearrange that one because of conditions, but it happened in trips and traps without, without winning participants. That's water sports. And then probably one of the biggest growth there is still is wellbeing. Last year we did a lot of yoga events, indoor, outdoor, family, which we did again this year. We also added to it with sound baths, which are, which were phenomenally popular as well. One we did indoor with Bettina there on the left, one we did outdoor, just outside the glass house, in the Italian, the Italianate glass house, again, really, really popular, very much a growing area. And the other sort of big strands that we purposely sort of extended on this year was our family fun activities. So some of the more, you know, sporty or literally active activities can cater for children, but not all of them can. So to increase that and to increase some of our support of local businesses, we had free tickets to the fun fair, what is now Frankie's Fun Fair, which has helped to support them, you know, build that, that new presence since they've taken over Kitty's Corner. We engaged Celine in the middle under, she works in the lane, this beat spins, she did a couple of circus skills sessions for a group of like 30 kids, absolutely fabulous, brilliant.
I've got a photo last, I've never said that before.
It's amazing, isn't it?
Yeah, yeah, well, the balls always lend themselves to, to the pictures. And then we also did a collaboration with, we did ask both Jump Inc and Elevate, if they wanted to be involved this year, only Jump Inc got back to us. So that is Jump Inc and they gave away, they, we contacted them to do a session for toddlers and an older bracket as well. And that was very popular too. And it's worth noting with the bounce park, the Bike Hire, maybe the Fun Fair as well, so a lot of these, we've got a lot of feedback, because we had a feedback form this year saying from families like, we wouldn't have done this, this is a new experience to us, we wouldn't have done this if we hadn't have got it to Active Ramsgate, either out of affordability or just because it kind of wasn't on their radar and they didn't think to do it, they wouldn't bother to invest in it because it wasn't, it just wasn't something they knew about as much. So it's definitely helping engage more, a broader range of people, which is all great. So I just wanted to show some of those activities, also those photos and also video, we, we're compiling and we're using a lot of that imagery for the digital drivers, that star and kind of like a big showcase video that we have, based on last year, but also using more footage from this year, we've kind of got like a best of video that really showcased... best of video that really showcases all the different activities we have now. Um, I also just want to show, one thing we didn't get to show the last TPC, but did the working group was, just skipping forward, if you have mind, to like the, the participation map, so, um, this is a rough geographical spread of people who applied for spaces in Active Ramsgate Week, and you can see, obviously the biggest concentration is the immediate locale, and then reaching, you know, where it's red is where you've got more participants, and across Thannick, you've got a healthy, like, um, interest, but it is spreading out, and we are getting interest, uh, across Kent, um, still predominantly East Kent, but we're reaching into London and even into Essex and further north. Uh, that was Active Ramsgate Week, which is great that it is spreading, but it is designed largely to be more for the locale and East Kent, uh, but we also ran this year a family weekend competition, that was a national competition with Inglewood's Coast, um, and that spread, we skipped down to, um, that's the spread of that, so much broader, obviously nationwide, and we're sort of reaching out into, into pretty much every corner of the UK really, and in fact, the island, not just the island of Ireland, but Ireland itself, there was a couple of participants.
A few from around the Canterbury-ish sort of area, the villages between.
Yeah.
The, the Athorn kind of.
Yeah, and that makes sense, it makes sense that, you know, people might see that in this, but they're obviously more in range anyway.
Particularly London.
Um, so, yeah, um, so that's built a database that we can continue to talk to.
Just, just to go back to a comment on your previous map, um, is that, uh, of course, um, the three, four years ago, we made a commitment that we wouldn't just focus, um, Active Ramsgate on outside of Ramsgate, and this was part of one of the changes that happened when we changed from external contractors to internal management, so it'd been about two and a half years ago, so that we would have, we would try and aim for a thirty percent coverage of service for local people, and certainly that is, we've had that easily here, so I think that, you know, it just, I just wanted to make that as a positive comment, that, you know, that is a part of evidencing how we are, um, working on that commitment, so, thank you.
Yeah, um, yeah, I think definitely Active Ramsgate Week covers it, and then these are the partnerships as well with the Half and the, you know, Big Bike Revival, and this, this spread of applicants that we now have that we can email, means we can keep growing the seventy percent side as well. Which the digital drive auto sports, but it's, it's all, 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 all part of it. Um, and that was it really, that was just, I was just conscious that the first part I did after the week was so, I think it was like a couple of days after, you know, a few days after, so that was just filling it in a bit more from, from what actually happened and the spread and some of the feedback. Any questions, welcome, but that, that's it.
I think, I think for me, the question is, um, really the fact that you're not doing organising next year's, and so, um, I don't know what, what your handover on that is, because I'm sort of like trying not to look at Rebecca, who's obviously going to pick up, um, in the first instance, um, you know, whatever needs to be done in the very short term before, um, we can get a replacement, so I just wondered if either of you could comment on that, because it, you're, under your key takeaways, it says a regular fixture, people are starting to notice AR Week in the calendar, and I think that's really important, we don't want that to slip in twenty twenty-six.
Yeah. Um, I mean, I mean, obviously it depends on how long the, the application process goes on, assuming it's like a couple of months, I think it's fairly safe to wait till that replacement's in, and like I say, I'm more likely to talk to them directly and hand that over directly, um. Other than that, I mean, a lot of, you know, all, all the systems I'm using, all the suppliers there, you've got a, you've, you've got formula, and you've got, um, you know, really, you can repeat all the activities again, and be going out to, you can be going out to suppliers, you know, in October and saying, are you on for next year again, and just agree in principle.
Yeah.
I think most will, uh, with, you know, everyone we've used largely seems to be happy. Um, so, yeah, we do reach out over either Dean and Rebecca or, or the new person once they're in, um.
I think, yeah, my other question again is, is in a similar sort of vein, um, but involves not Rebecca this time, but Dean, um, I'm conscious that one of the things that you did was, when you first joined us, was about getting the data and doing the research and everything else. How is that likely to be carried forward? So you've got the maps and everything else, and I'm, and I'm just wondering how much of that work has been done with Dean, and is, how much of that are you likely to be able to pick up and work with whoever comes in, because I had no idea what the skillsets of, of whoever's coming in is, is going to have, and, and it may not be that they've got the same skillsets in the data analysis and everything else that you brought, um, and so I'm just wondering how manageable that is by, I'm sorry, I'm lads in you a little bit.
Well, in the first instance, you know, the market research stuff is all there and it's all well catalogued, they, you know, I, in my meeting with them, I was saying, you know, if your start point.
Yeah.
Is, you know, uh, here's, here's the strategy, here's the market research, here's how Active Ramsgate sits into things, all that's there, and there's a good basis for them to get up to speed. Um, we were actually talking about this earlier, Dean was asking, you know, there is an outstanding small bit from that original market research to follow up on some, um, further ask, you know, uh, asking people what, what their experience has been of different activities direction, um, and that's something Dean certainly can pull up on. I mean, things like that sort of data analysis there, I, you know, if you want to ask for that in, in the, in the job advert, I don't think it was actually in the advert I responded to.
I don't think it was actually.
But also, I mean, that particularly, I mean, that was ChatGPT, you know, me using that to do that, um, I don't think you need, I mean, that's, it was quite handy to have that for this time, just to visually show the spread, I don't think it's critical, I think you will need someone who can do basic, basic data collection and things like that, which, 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 Dean knows all the systems I've used, all the, so all the.
I think that's the, I think that's the answer to the question, that, I think, if, Dean knows the systems you've used, so.
I, I think it's safe to say that the model that Simon's put in place with forms and everything is ready to go, just to lift, and the new person can just follow the same thing, as if it'd be the same stats.
And you maybe still understand it so that you can.
Yeah, I mean, we, 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 we'd seen you sat up most time, and then I'd.
I was mostly expecting that answer, I was kind of hoping and expecting that answer, but, um, obviously, you know, I, we've got to look forward to, um, handover and, and, you know, whoever comes in, and, and at this point in time, I haven't got a clue what that's gonna look like, so, um, but it's just about making sure that there is as much as possible in place to smooth the transition, um.
Well, the good news there is, like, with having two weeks in place as well, that's kind of like the main drive, probably a lot of these systems in place.
Hmm.
Um, so, yeah.
Yeah, okay, that, thank you, that, that was just what I wanted to check really, thank you. Any other questions from councillor Shonk?
Remember, there's a train from London to Marge Gate, you know, which is fair, and bang, that's, that's still on, because if it is Marge Gate, we could do the same for Ramsgate, we talked about this many years ago, didn't we? That's the one, Marge Gate, I mean, another thing, Chris.
Yeah, I mean, it would be great to get it, wouldn't it? And it definitely wanted to talk to, I would say, Julie at TDC about.
Yeah. Um.
I think it's been about three years since the last time.
Yeah.
So it's.
I mean, it would be, it would be something, wouldn't it?
Yeah.
Also worth bearing in mind, from the address on the TV, I was just thinking, I mean, you know, if you're talking about London as well, you're, you know, one of, one of our audiences is young professionals and some of the stuff we're doing is trying to, trying to reach there, if you did have that, it could tie along with some of that, but also, you know, from Rebecca's report, the work with TDC, or some new material to reach that audience, so it would be very good to tie up with that and, and, yeah, do it at the same time if, if, if that was possible, but I, I don't know how they've come about, I've not, I've not worked on any of those done.
No, it's, it's still being final edited, but Dean and I have seen it, and we think it's really nice, there's a one for social media platforms and another slightly longer one, which can also be used on those platforms, but, um, we can embed them as well into our websites, but really nice, targeting the twenty to forty-year-olds, uh, we're with quite a few businesses that fit that demographic really nicely, um, so, yeah, hopefully that will help as well, because a lot of that audience are from London, and, and they can, they can afford the, the normal pay, the normal charge of the train fare as well.
Right, a thing that was just to, to note the report, so, thank you very much. Um, that was, that's it, it's there. Um, the working group minutes from Active Ramsgate, before you disappear, um, we just need to note, to receive and note the minutes, um. Do we have another Active Ramsgate working group meeting?
Not until January.
Right, so by which time we would be looking at, hopefully, someone new in post, um, so I, on that basis, as Simon's not going to be here, I'm just going to go back to the summary of actions from that working group, so it was that, uh, Simon was arranging a meeting between, um, some sample operators and himself and Rebecca and myself, um, and councillor Alburn, it also got councillor Duckworth and councillor Huxley, but who were not able to make it, but, so that was completed, um. The summary report covering the last eight months, I think really is covered by the, by that motion really, I think that, that kind of crystallises it, um, and did we get an answer back from councillor Alburn about when the Star Chamber budget process will start?
Only that it's imminent.
Imminent, yeah, okay.
It is in August, I think.
Yeah, I think it is, I think it is, um, I think, uh, the reason I asked that is because that is quite critical with that motion as well, I think, um, so when's the next full council?
Uh, twenty seventh of August.
Okay. I, I think we do still need to get that information from him, um. Yeah, I think if we could, so we need to follow that up, um, because he hasn't, he hasn't come back to us on it, um, between us, we will get that from him and, and feed that into you, Dean, to, um, liaise with, uh, town clerk on that one, so, um, because that is quite critical to, to that motion, so that was all, and obviously the work with Ramsgate Football Club will be continued by your successor, so, um, I.
Well, and indeed, I know Rebecca's been talking to James at RFC as well.
Yeah.
Is already building up a good relationship on that score, so.
Yeah. Okay, so that's the end of, um, this particular part of the meeting, we do have a couple of confidential items, so, um, at, at this point, um, I think I just read this, don't I, it is recommended that under the Public Bodies Act nineteen sixty, as extended by section one hundred of Local Government Act nineteen seventy-two, the public and accredited representatives of newspapers be excluded from the meeting for the following items of business on the grounds that they involve the likely disclosure of exempt information as defined in part one of schedule twelve A of the Local Act nineteen seventy-two, my virtue of the paragraph specified against the item. That sounds like a lot of gobbledygook, but it just means that basically, for, at this point on, we exclude the press and public, can I have a proposer? Councillor Huxley in a second, uh, councillor Alburn, and do I agree? Yes, so that's, we're all agreed, so at that point, thank you very much for, um, being with us tonight, and, uh, we will now be.